Aunt Patty's on the square. Park County's oldest antique mall with 22 years on the southeast corner of the square. We have 25 dealers who take great pride in stocking and maintaining their booths. In 7,500 square feet, you can find almost everything from the smallest penknife to great jewelry, vintage coins, sports cards, dishes like Grandma had, all the way to a large piece of furniture. We're open seven days a week. Our hours are Monday through Saturday, 10 to 5, and Sunday noon to 5.
Okay, well, we need to get started. Call order. First on the agenda is that this is just a public hearing. There will be no action on this today. So Roy, you want to explain what we have in mind?
Okay, so in the last, in the spring legislative session, the legislature passed a bill that allows a county who funds, entirely funds an EMS service over the entire county to implement a local income tax rate to support that service up to a .2%. After review of that, review of the existing local income tax rates, and was published in the paper as part of this process, the council has drafted up ordinance 2022-11, which would shift part of the local income tax rate from two categories into this new emergency medical service rate. .09% of that will be moved, or would be moved if this is adopted, from the levy freeze rate, which currently stands at .56%, would move to .47%. That is being fully funded from the 10-plus years of this county being a levy freeze county. The revenues are exceeding the amount required to fund that. The extra revenue from that goes into a low-stabilization fund that is not accessible except for in the cases where the revenue into levy freeze is not sufficient, and then it is used to supplement that revenue to all the units of government in the county. That fund has, is growing, and you cannot put, I mean, you can continue to put money into it, but like you said, you cannot access it. So .09% will come, would come from there. .10% would come from property tax relief. That is currently a half a percent. That would move to .4. This is part of the property tax replacement credits that show up on property tax statements. The overall income tax rate currently stands at 2.65%. It will remain at 2.65%, so there will be no change in the amount of, in the total income tax rate to the citizens of the county. There will be no change in the amount of revenue going to any unit of government, whether it be the townships, towns, schools, or anybody else that gets any of this local income tax revenue, with the exception of the .19% would go into a dedicated fund in the county ledger for supporting the ambulance service. All other breakdowns for the local income tax rate will remain the same. Public safety rate will remain unchanged. The economic development rate will remain unchanged. The property tax allocation categories will remain unchanged, and certified shareage rate will remain unchanged. So that is what has been drafted and been published. The council will determine its action on that next month in October. Should it be chosen to adopt this ordinance, this change will be effective January 1st going forward. Are there any questions?
So it's just merely a shift. It's not a, an increase in taxes?
Yeah, there's no increase in taxes. Levis won't change. Tax rates won't change. Total tax rate's just a shift of the money around to a use that's, to a use that I think is, at least as speaking for myself, is very appropriate for this revenue.
Okay, hearing no comments, we'll move on. Department head comments. Commissioner Meese?
Rich Hesel, of course, coming up. We have New Tent Company this year. They have asked that they be allowed to start, possibly start as early as the 3rd of October. So PCI is asking Shacks to be in place by the 2nd of October. And so we see them coming in what seems to be early because the festival's late this year, starts on the 2nd Friday, because it's the 14th now. So that's about a week behind normally. So you see Shacks coming in 2nd of October. Tent should be up anytime after that. We should be good to go. That's really about all I've got. We didn't discuss the thing last, last week. Media Road was done. We paid Media Road, as you recall, ready to use a new company. We have three areas on that road that, that mix that was made by that new company was not made correctly. It's not falling apart, but like it did on Waxy Road, we got the same problem from Milestone a year before. When it gets hot, it leaks out, leeches out, makes the roads slimy and oily. Have to keep sanding it, and that just, this just has to stop. So we instructed our attorney to write them a letter. They offered, I think, Randy to give some money back on the product. I'm not at all satisfied with just giving us some money back. We bought a product that was supposed to be good to be on the road. It was not, and so we're going to seek some, to be made whole on that, and that would include possibly them having to come and have to have it dig and replace those three sections that are, that are bad. Rest of the road looks great. I mean, Highway Department does great. And I want to make sure I understood that it's not the Highway Department fair. You had a couple of calls on that early, but they weren't done with the road yet. But one was done, the road looks good. It's got three sections where, where that's coming up, and they've already sanded, I don't know, two or three times. It's just, just not the way you own a new business. So I'm not willing to accept that anymore and take some money back and say, okay, it's not okay. It's got to be done tonight, so I'm going to fix that. That's about all I can think of. Got any questions for us on anything?
Okay.
We're still in the throes of reassessment. We are still in Washington Township. So many Amish with so many buildings, it takes a little bit longer in Washington, but we're making good progress and have an IV, well, we've had our informal hearings for the 22 pay 23 assessments, and so far, only one person thus far wants to go to Peta Boa, so that's very good. We had several settle or withdraw, so good year as far as appeals go. And then we have an IBTR hearing next Thursday for the 2020 Richard and Thelma Jean Hackey appeal. I'll be attending that. That's all I have.
All right, Alice?
Everything's fine.
Good?
No problems right now.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Sheriff?
So far from DOC, 112,000 full a year, averaging 12,445 per month. Got 62 inmates in there today. Over the whole day weekend, we did have one homicide with an arrest, had a fatal accident. Our flush valve replacement project at the jail started about three weeks ago, so that's been going on. That's one of the upgrades. And then we had been using some community service people to do some, I guess, housekeeping at the jail, doing some painting of the lobby and replacing or not replacing, but repairing some door doors for the jail where they dressed it out at the bottom, some exterior doors and the shower door. So we're going to do some minor upgrades, so that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Meese, have they come up with anything about the jail exterior? Still working on that?
He has sent that out again a different way. He has talked to New Core. New Core originally just sent it out to people who were registered with them because that's who they, they went to the product from. That's where Dan went to the product from. He has met with them, and they've restructured that, sending that stuff out, so he's still hopeful that somebody's going to come. It's just, you know, those few companies that have people working are full, and the rest of people don't want to work, so where do you go with that?
I understand, believe me. It's every day, but can't get anything done.
Okay.
The fire enunciators, that started too long with flush valves, but they're working in the courthouse doing changing the enunciators over, so that project has started.
Good deal. Okay, thank you. No public, any public comment?
Yes, I do.
Oh, Laura. Okay, go ahead.
So what I just passed out to you is a budget status report. You can see one column of what the budget was for the 2022. You can see in the other column that I got top marked paid, what we paid out so far. And over here to the right, it's highlighted that we're short on funds to pay out for November election. One of the problems is that the meals, the meal price has been changed for the future. Has increased the meals from $8 to $12 per meal. So we don't know what the council wants to do on taking action on to getting these funds fixed, so at the end of the year, we are not in a red. Because you should have at least 50% left in each one of these categories. Because all the other payments have, like you've only got, we paid out $1,219.09 for meals last May. November, we've only got $730.09 to pay. Your precinct inspectors was paid out $1,500. We only have 700 left to pay. The budgets were paid out $2,880. We only have $220 to be paid. And the precinct clerk was paid $2,670. We only have $1,430 to be paid. The early voter workers that come into work, they were paid last May $3,744. This time for November, we've only got $1,256 to pay them. So I don't know if you want to do an official or...
So have you talked to the clerk about this?
Nope. He gets his budget status report every month.
Well, then I would suggest that the clerk needs to see what he wants to do with it. It means it's in his department, and we'll have...
I just want to bring this to your attention so you can still hear...
Have the clerk look at it first. I think it'd be a little unfair for us to just take action without consulting him. So we will consult the clerk and see how he wants to handle it, so.
Sounds like a good decision.
And I think in the future, we should, you know, we need to start with the department head before it comes to us. Okay, so the minutes for next are still not done, is that right?
That is correct. They are tabled. We will have them together by next time because...
Okay, be sure we have the budget minutes, too. Moving on, additional appropriations.
All right, so we've got two additional appropriations in front of us. The first one is for the Health Department for $20,000. I have had conversations with the president of the Health Board, asked that be moved to a different fund instead of a property tax bearing fund. That is for the, they're going to digitize birth and death records, among other things. It's in our packet here. So Stephanie Laws, who's the president of the Health Board now, has gone back and reported that they can spend that out of Fund 1168. So they are preparing another additional for us to consider in October, so I would, my motion would be, when it comes time, would be to deny the Health Department one. The next one's for the Central Park TIF. There's a correction to what is said on the agenda here. It's Fund 4502-00-03-5080. It's the service contracts line. That is $510,000, and that is to up that due to the redevelopment commission and the town agreeing that the upfront costs, the upfront payment from TIF money for the 41 North Sewer project would be increased to $1.7 million. So this will make that whole. So that 1.7 would be appropriated for, for calendar year 2022. Any questions about the two of those? Okay, so I will make the motion that we deny the Health Department additional and that we approve the Central Park TIF additional appropriation corrected to the account number, which is what was published in the paper.
Motion's been made in sector on the additionals. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So Health has submitted a transfer, and this is what Janet was referring to as budget hearings, which I'm not...
To some extent, but I don't understand, so maybe the auditor can shed a little bit of light on this, as to why are we paying this extra clerical position 7525? Why are we not paying it per the adopted budget?
Because that's what the state is requiring, which is going by what the state...
Well, somebody's going to have to show the documentation of the state requiring something like that, because this is more than just transferring money around. This is changing a salary ordinance and all that stuff that goes along with that. At this point, we have an adopted budget and an adopted salary for that position. So it's, at this point...
Stays as it is?
It stays as it is. It's not a shortage of funding. It's not a change to the salary. It's being paid differently for some reason, and we need to...
I would go find the documentation. We have a question.
Okay, so that's tabled there. Whatever, we're not going to, we'll do that. Reappropriation?
On that reappropriation, the Auditor's Office has paid a bill two times for the fire security out of the County General Fund, and we received a refund check back to that. And on that refund check that's been received back to that, we need that go back into the County General Line where it was paid out.
Motion to approve the reappropriation, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion's been made in sector reappropriate funds, all in favor. How are we coming with the, taking the funds from the maintenance man that was overpaid by your office?
I've got that in the hands of the attorney.
So do you know anything beyond that, what's happening with it?
He's sent a letter out, and he's supposed to be sent into small claims, but I have to follow up with him after this. We need to find out how this came.
Because at some point, if we don't receive that, we'll need to make a claim, because you're bonded, so if we can't get that money, we'll have to make a claim to your bond to get it, because we're going to get it. So I don't know how long we have to wait on that. If he takes him to, do you know anything about this, Meese? If we take the small claims, of course, we'll get a judgment, but if we don't get it, well, then the county will have to file against the bond to get it.
And that's what the bond's for.
Right, and that's what the bond's for, but I want to make sure that we are staying up on top of that, because...
Yeah, you're exactly right. Even be get a judgment, doesn't mean...
It's meaningless. It's meaningless. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but it's meaningless. But, well, we are going to recollect that, collect those funds somehow. We have a bond, and we will get it.
Do you remember what the amount was, about the month?
What is the amount?
$1,000 rather than...
$1,000, right underneath $100, $1,000 something, $1,080, $1,080, somewhere around there.
But we just need to make, we just need to get it back. Okay, no reduction in funds. Committee reports, redevelopment?
Good, good, Joe. Stated with the additional appropriation, we did sign a new interlocal or revised interlocal with the town for the 41 North Sewer project. They have, the town has bid that project, so due to this taking longer than the interlocal existing ones, a couple, three years old at least, we made the decision to increase the upfront payment to 1.7 million, and the 80% of the revenues to pay off the balance remains in place. We approved invoices for our attorney, considered revolving loan requests from Hurricane Hill Botanicals, excuse me, who is looking to build a salt cave at their location north of town here, and so they were awarded 15, or loans, $15,000 from revolving loan fund.
Things been pretty decent on those evolving.
Yeah, we've got a couple that were, a couple, three that were battling around about, but the rest of them are making their...
Overall, it's been good.
Yeah, overall, it's been, yeah. It's a decent program. They're, obviously, they're risky. I mean, that's, they're there because they can't get commercial, it seems, so. But we, that's what it's for, take a chance on somebody.
Okay. Plans on it?
Did not mean.
Did not mean. Sheriff, I'll let you talk about the test, because other than you told me about it, well, it'd probably be best to come from you.
We did a test last week on the, I guess, the warehouse panning button system. It worked. The only thing in the past that would send all the officers a text, and he'd run out in the car, he didn't have a portable, I mean, if you're off duty or something, and the text didn't go through, so Randy Cleaver was trying to work with the company on that, so I haven't heard anything since then, but, but the system did work, and it's kind of a backup notice of what didn't go out, so.
That's why it's good to test that stuff and see, see if it actually works, you know? So it's good, budgeted that. Chris, did you want, this might be a good time for you to say something?
Yeah, I have two grants that are really easy. I just wanted to get you guys to tell you about them, so I get your approval. The first grant is the Salary Reimbursement Grant. We do that every year. And then the second grant is, it's a grant that I'm going to use. It's for $20,000. I'm looking at buying some communication stuff to get some radios and stuff for the dispatch. None of, there's no matching on any of these. They're pretty straightforward and easy.
And you need our approval to do this, I guess? That Greg applicant, well?
Motion to approve the grant request for...
And I just had one thing I want, as you guys are going through the, the budget, and it's, I'm sure you're going to give everyone pay raises, but when you look at that grant for the EMPG salary grant, for $18,450, that, it's been at that level for a long time, and, and it's either that level for Park County, or it's 50%, whichever's less. So right now, it's exactly at 50% of the salaries. So if you're going to give a pay raise, and if you look at the deputy director's one, she gets paid two, from two pots of money, but both of them are general fund money. There's one for the, it's both of them. So if you're going to give her a pay raise, it would be good to give her the pay raise from, put it into the EMA account. And the reason for that is if the state increases this next year, which I think is 50% chance of it happening, we'd be able to take advantage of that increase. So it's really, it's, it's how you label money and how we label it, we can take it.
What had always had happened prior to this amendment that's going to be adopted shortly is that it went in the ambulance service line for her, right?
Yes, yeah, our, yes.
This one, since we're doing this on a percentage, is both places.
Okay.
But that is, that's the kind of information that's good to have, Chris, because it's a little late now to change this one, but when we prepare it for next year, you know, that can certainly be...
Because we're just ready to adopt.
Yeah, we're ready to adopt.
Well, yeah, and this grant is just for '22, so I guess '23, yeah, so we're beyond...
Yeah, so, you know, when we prepare the '24 budget, that's the kind of information that's good to have, so that we can move, you know, we can do that. We could put that, that increase in that line and get more of it back. So thank you for that. That's how it's going to happen with that particular position this time, is that it's going to be split, both places.
Thank you.
We didn't vote on that, did we?
We have not. I was, I made a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Cameron seconds, all in favor?
Okay, now you want to... Put this in my stack of signed stuff here. Don't leave until you sign papers, gentlemen.
Okay, so ready to move on to new business? You're going to do longevity, is that what you want to do?
Do longevity first. You want to do the West Central thing now, or?
No, I want to do longevity now. We'll deal with that when we do the budget.
Okay, so we have a couple resolutions to consider. Resolution 2022-06, this is a resolution relating to longevity pay to Park County employees and units of government. This will be the, what we generally term this as, the civilian longevity. And I'm, skip the whereas parts of this, but the body of this is, upon reaching the fifth year of continuous service with Park County, each employee shall receive additional compensation in the amount of $1,500. It's an increase of $500 per year on that tier. Upon reaching the 10th year of continuous service with Park County, each employee shall receive additional compensation in the amount of $2,500. That's a $500 increase on that tier. Upon reaching the 15th year of continuous service with Park County, each employee shall receive additional compensation in the amount of $3,500. Again, a $500 increase. Number four, only full-time employees are eligible to receive longevity pay under this resolution. Five, elected officials, probation officers, extension agents, and part-time employees are not eligible to receive longevity pay under this resolution. Twenty years of service accumulated by elected officials or part-time employees will be counted should the affected employee become an otherwise eligible full-time employee of Park County. Longevity pay may only be awarded for continuous uninterrupted years of service as an employee of Park County. Longevity pay shall be awarded on the first day on the calendar year in which the eligible employee's hire date makes him or her eligible to receive it. This, there is the only change to this resolution, the one it's replacing, is the $500 increase per the tiers. Everything else is verbatim, same as it is, with the final exception that it will be effective January 1st, 2023. That is Resolution 2022-06. 2022-07 is the deputy one. All this is pretty much the same. First line, upon five years, receive additional compensation in the amount of $3,000. That's a $1,000 increase in that tier. The 10th year, $5,000. Again, another $1,000 increase. Upon reaching 15 years, $7,000. Again, it's a $1,000 increase on that tier. Before the sheriff is not eligible, but years served as sheriff would be counted should he or she subsequently assume the duties of sheriff's deputy after expiration of his or term as sheriff. That is exactly how the current one reads. Five, the matron is not eligible for longevity pay in this resolution. The matron is eligible in the other resolution, which is exactly the same. Longevity pay may only be awarded for continuous uninterrupted years of service. It shall be awarded on the first day of the calendar year and will be effective January 1st, 2023. The difference in this one is, is that the tiers were increased $1,000 apiece compared to the current one, and the date of effectiveness is 2023, January 1st. Okay? Any questions?
Motion's been made by JB, seconded by Cameron, to adopt vote for resolutions. All in favor? Okay, now the budget letter?
We've got the budget letter. Okay, as is customary, as you all know, when we get ready to adopt the budget, the council prepares a letter. This is that letter for this year. Park County Council wishes to provide an update on the review and adoption of the county budget for 2023. Park County Council remains committed to being diligent with taxpayers' dollars. We continue to look at spending levels, trying to make prudent decisions to efficiently operate the county government while maintaining and improving the needed services to the county's taxpayers. Remain committed to keeping tax rates as low as possible to enable taxpayers to keep as much of their hard-earned dollars as possible, knowing that we all have limited means with which to operate. In 2022, the story of the year has been inflation and the very tight workforce conditions. Many departments have struggled to hire and retain quality employees. Inflationary environment has put strains on various parts of county government. The higher costs and lack of availability of fuel, asphalt, office supplies, vehicles, spare parts, and other items has made each department head have to be expiring... has made each department head have to be extra diligent in their duties to remain fiscally conscious. The department heads and council have worked together to navigate these issues the best we can, and we remain committed to ensuring that departments get the materials they need. Further, this budget makes a strong commitment to improving compensation to our valuable employees to help address the situation of employee recruitment and retention. Early in the year, the ambulance service suffered a devastating fire at the station. In the aftermath, the service lost three of four ambulances for some period of time. The building suffered extensive damage and required a complete gutting and rebuild. The entire inventory of medical supplies was damaged or determined to be unsafe to use. Immediately following the devastating loss, the true spirit of Park County and the entire EMS community across the state came forward, as they always do, to lend equipment, materials, and space to help get our EMS service back on its feet. Fire departments across the county allowed the use of their buildings for our ambulances and personnel. Surrounding agencies donated medical supplies and ambulances while repairs were made and stock was replenished. Special shout-out goes to the entire Park County EMS department, who are working through this very difficult year, and to Director Julie Landzone for guiding the department in what has been a very difficult situation. Park County EMS will recover and be better than ever after this, and has truly shown their spirit through this whole ordeal. During two thousand twenty-two, several projects have been undertaken due to the federal funding provided by the American Rescue Plan. Broadband matching grants to Joint and Bloomingdale Home Telephone were committed to increase the local match for the next level connections grants. Both providers were successful in obtaining state matching funds from this program and will expand broadband service in our county. A new ambulance was purchased partly from this funding to replace the total ambulance from the fire. Projects at the jail and courthouse have been undertaken to replace aging equipment integral to the buildings. Through the use of these dollars, the local taxpayer has not had to shoulder the entire burden of these needed investments. There remains a balance in the county's distribution of ARC funds, and the county council and the board of county commissioners are committed to working together to utilize these funds wisely and to the betterment of citizens of the county. In two thousand twenty-two, the revenues of the county government returned to pre-pandemic levels. In two thousand twenty-three, we expect to see revenues increase. The council will continue to work to replenish reserves that were utilized during the pandemic and made, and make needed investments as appropriate. Council is committed to being ready for the next downturn, whenever that may be. Several county departments have been actively seeking grants to extend the local tax dollars further. From emergency management to highway and everywhere in between, the employees of county government have not relented in finding more funding sources to extend allocated dollars further and make more improvements and investments in their departments. Rockville Lake Park has made several improvements over the last couple of years. Due to the leadership of Director Chris Newcomb, the park has continued to grow attendance and is nearly self-sufficient at this point. Director Newcomb and his staff have done a tremendous job of growing Rockville Lake Park into a sought-out destination in our county. Today, the council held a public hearing and proposed change to local income tax distribution. In the two thousand twenty-three legislative session, the legislature passed a bill allowing the county, a county that operates a countywide ambulance service to implement a local income tax rate to support it. After study, the council has determined that this would be a prudent move to make to support our EMS service. The overall total county income tax rate will remain unchanged at two point six five percent. Council will shift tax rate, rate around from levy frees and property tax replacement credits to provide this funding. No units of local government in the county will see a reduction in revenue from this change, and again, the total local income tax rate will remain unchanged. Council anticipates considering this ordinance in October, with the change, if adopted, occurring January first, two thousand twenty-three. On August eighteenth, the council reviewed the budget request for two thousand twenty-three, it is important to note that many department heads came to the council with flat or lower budget requests than they are currently receiving. Considering the still uncertain economic climate with which we are navigating, as well as the inflationary environment, it was specifically noted and appreciated by the council. With a careful review and consideration, the council anticipates the following highlights in the two thousand twenty-three budget. Total anticipated county budget twenty-three is eighteen million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. This is a four point two percent increase over the two thousand twenty-two budget. Salaried and full part-time employees, with the exception of county commissioners and county councilmen, can expect a salary increase of five percent. Hourly highway employees can expect an increase of seventy-five cents per hour. Hourly part-time employees can expect an increase of twenty-five cents per hour. EMS, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics have been changed to an hourly pay structure and can expect hourly pay rates of fifteen dollars per hour and nineteen dollars per hour, respectively. This is a significant investment in our valuable employees and counts for the vast majority of the increase in the county budget. Salary increases alone amount to five point eight five percent over last year. County commissioners and county councilmen will not receive an increase in two thousand twenty-three. The council also elected to make a change to the longevity program, rewarding loyal employees who stay on with Park County government. Civilian tiers will be increased five hundred dollars each, and merit deputy tiers will be increased one thousand dollars each. The longevity program introduced by the council in two thousand nineteen has been successful in rewarding our dedicated employees for staying on and serving their community. It has also been used as a model in other counties. The resolutions making these changes were adopted today by the council. The council committed to granting an additional two thousand dollar bonus to sheriff's department public safety employees from the ARC fund. This funding will be included in the normal payroll cycle and is subject to approval by the board of county commissioners. Continuation of a stipend system for county sheriff's deputies that rewards merit deputies who achieve higher levels of training and use that training to teach their fellow officers. County highway funding of five million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars, an increase of over six point five percent year over year. This is over thirty-one percent of the total county budget. Council continues to use funding from other sources to supplement gas tax revenues while holding a reasonable reserve in the highway department funds. The county highway department continues to apply for and secure matching funding from the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program, allowing them to accomplish more work on the county roadway system with less impact total to local taxpayers. Continued utilization of user fee-supported funds to help offset the burden on tax-supported funds. The county continues to maintain a cash balance in all funds, as well as a rainy day fund and other funds that are available for unforeseen circumstances. As evidenced by the two thousand twenty-one budget, it is imperative and responsible that the council continues to hold a reserve to be utilized as appropriate. As a sidebar, if you'll recall, two thousand twenty-one was the year where the revenues fell off the cliff, particularly in highway, and we were able to maintain funding due to the reserves that have been held. Our work will continue as the budget is submitted for, to the state for approval. Once we receive our response from the Department of Local Government Finance and more firm revenue forecasts, we may have to make adjustments, and none of this is final until that time. Through the pandemic, the council has worked to ensure that no services were interrupted and the continued investments were made. This was possible due to the fiscal responsibility of the council and county government employees leading up to and through the pandemic. This has also enabled the council to make further investments following the pandemic, as well as prepare for any upcoming downturns or surprises. The future remains uncertain, but through the efforts of dedicated county employees, we believe we can weather this current situation and come out of it better than before. The overall fiscal condition, condition of the county government continues to be stable, and the county council is committed to maintaining that condition. The council wishes to thank the employees of county government for their hard work, efficiency, and diligence in living within their means. Your efforts are noticed and much appreciated by the council and the taxpayers of Park County. In closing, we remain very committed to operating a county government that's responsible to taxpayers of the county and efficient in providing these services with which we are responsible in these challenging times. Sincerely, Park County Council.
Questions?
Uh, for the members, do you have a couple pages, kind of a real quick summary of?
You wanna go over that at all?
Nothing really to go over. This is the, the old day two summary thing that we used to do when we met the second day, we took through that thing, so, just there for you, um, the final version.
There are no questions?
I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt ordinance twenty-two dash ten, which is the two thousand twenty-three Park County budget.
Motion been made in fact to adopt the twenty-three budget, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, involved with that, we have the West Central, um, solid waste request, which is within the budget. Um, you can go ahead and approve that, I guess, you basically approved it in the budget, but that's a cleaner, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion been made in fact to approve the solid waste budget, the commissioners, I might say, have already, uh, signed onto this, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Say it. Can you have another?
Okay, yes. For your consideration, uh, resolution twenty-two dash zero eight, a resolution relating to appropriation of grant proceeds. And I'll read this thing verbatim. Whereas Indiana law empowers local governing bodies to adopt the necessary ordinances and resolutions to provide for the effective governance of the unit. And whereas the Park County Council is empowered with the duty to appropriate funds received and expended by county officials pursuant to IC thirty-six dash two dash five dash two B. And whereas the federal and state governments and their respective offices and departments may award grants to Park County departments or offices. And whereas the council has determined it's the best interest of Park County and its citizens to appropriate any grant proceeds received by any department or office of Park County prior to the payments of any claims against those grant proceeds. And whereas the council desires to adopt this resolution to ensure that grant funds are properly appropriated and expended pursuant to the terms of the grant award and Indiana law. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Park County Council, that any monies received by the department, by any department or office of Park County as proceeds from a grant from the federal or state government or their respective departments or offices shall be presented to the Park County Council for appropriation prior to the payment of any claims from that grant. The resolution shall be effective in accordance with Indiana law, shall apply to all departments and offices of Park County, Indiana, except as provided for under Indiana law. That's the resolution.
So, the real purpose here is that the state, as the State Board of Accounts continues to look at these grants, and basically, the commissioners and the council are held responsible for these, that we need more oversight into what's happening, because it makes it difficult when we're asked then by the State Board of Accounts to justify what's going on, and we really haven't really had a say-so, or haven't had any hand in what's going on, so, I think this will, uh, help us, uh, have more tools now, and we'll have a better, uh, handle on these grants. So.
Simply put, and all that that I said is, is that if you receive a grant.
Kind of before us, so.
Solid, and nearly, I mean, there's, there's, uh, probably a dozen funds in this budget that we just adopted that are, that are maybe even two dozen, that are grants that are budgeted every year. That process is done at that point, I mean, it's been appropriated. Once the budget is adopted, then the grant is appropriated, there are some that, that come in that, uh,
We need a better hand to it.
We just have, but we have some that don't, and those have to be doubled.
Questions?
Motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash oh eight.
Motion been made in fact to approve the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. On my hat now, do we have any, do we have anything else?
No, 'cause I haven't talked to you about that one, so.
Okay, any other comments or questions relating to the budget or anything of that nature? I mean, we should thank probably Roy for all of his work that he's done to pull that together. I mean, it's always a work in progress, I mean, I look at budgets as basically a roadmap. Things change, but we move forward with what we've got and know that there are always things that will have to be, come out that are, have to be addressed at the time.
Did you decide anything on the mileage?
I haven't even brought it up, we, we need to research it more, well, I'll still look at it, but I just, to be honest with you, I haven't had time.
I, I actually did some research, but we haven't had a chance, none of us had a chance to discuss it.
It, it's a good point.
It is a, it's a very good point.
We'll, we'll try, but I, we haven't gotten to it, is the answer, but we haven't forgotten.
Yeah, I'm, keep, keep asking, man, keep asking, man, it's fine. Actually, my, that paper's in my packet of, of the state, what the state's done, and, and so.
We'll try to see if we.
I have certainly forgotten.
We won't forget, bro.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
You want a bonus reduction?
Huh?
You want a reduction?
Well, I told her the gas was coming down, decent, went down eight cents yesterday.
Drop it down.
We'll, we'll look at it, though. It's been a long.
Did you see when it was actually last?
I remember it, it's been a whole time.
I was on the council, then the first year or two.
Do you remember when it was?
No, it's been a while.
Yeah, we're talking.
I think Diana has.
Seventeen, no, Pam was older.
Pam was earlier then, okay.
We'll look at it, though, I, it is probably long overdue.
Thank you for the raise.
We're welcome trying to do what we can and.
Trying to keep our money employed.
Trying to, yeah, we want you to come to work, so.
We need you to come to work.
Okay, anything else, other than everybody's gotta stay assigned? Anything else? Anything? Does that sound all right to you?
Yep.
Yeah, you don't have any hand in it, as long as there's money, as long as there's money, you don't care, do you?
As long as my budget go, that's all I care about.
Yeah, all right, I get you.
We'll do the salary ordinance in October.
Well, yeah, we're, we'll still have to do a salary ordinance, but we're gonna wait a little bit, there's not a rush to get that.
I think it's pretty well done, but I've spent much time on it, I've been trying to get the rest of it done, so.
But we'll get that done, so. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.